Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Oregon Board of Education meeting of September 19th. We'll have the pledge of allegiance to the flag, and then a moment of silence. Moment of silence this evening is for Carol Snow, who is a custodian, and mother of Carol Sankrant, our secretary of administration building, and Raymond Wright, who was a science teacher at Vassett. So just stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands on my nation under God, in the resolve of liberty, justice, and the Constitution.
Thank you. Do we have a roll call, please, Mrs. Hreer?
Yes. Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulder?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zabisky?
Yes.
Please silence all personal electronic devices during the meeting. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as written, please. Someone with a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Roll call. Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zabisky?
Yeah.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulder?
Yes. Okay, we do have a special award tonight. I'm going to turn that over to me, Mr. Gregory.
Okay. We're going to start out with kind of a very, very important honor to someone who has recently been able to complete their graduation requirements to receive their high school diploma some years after they left high school. So I would like to invite Precious Dowell and her family to come up. So why don't everybody feel free to come up because we're going to take some pictures. So come on up. So just a quick history of what I've learned in just recently. Precious was in an online school back in 2012, actually had 25 credits, but was only one, I'm assuming, state test away, one state test away from graduating. Well, at that time, for whatever reason, the test didn't happen, and through the course of, I think, your children, and it looked like you went in and got some other education, some other areas in the healthcare.
Yes, I graduated from ultimate medical academy as a healthcare management, and then I'm actually, I was actually waiting on my high school diploma to go to Ross to go for my medical assistance, and I'm going after I did that, I'm going for my OPN, and then I'm going for my REA.
So I see, that's a good way. So one of the lucky things we get to do is, based on the district that you're at, or district you formerly lived in, you're able to apply once you complete requirements and get that after the age of 22. So Precious, on behalf of Oregon City Schools and myself, Al Gregory, congratulations-
Thank you.
-on receiving your high school diploma. And as you can see, it's a full diploma, and there's actually something in it. She told me the story that she went to a previous graduation, but that there was no certificate inside the graduation. So congratulations, and we would like to take some pictures. And I don't know, come on up a little closer here, guys, if you want. No, you don't want anything to do with coming up this close. All right, well, we're going to take a picture for you, and then we'll get an email to you through our office, if that's okay. Actually, Dean's got some.
Okay, you're going to take a picture with me, guys?
Can you guys stand closer so we can get a picture?
Come here, come here, Mom.
Do a selfie.
Come here. Okay.
Oh, that's great.
Y'all got me crying.
You're officially graduating, guys.
Thank you.
So congratulations to you and your family, and we wish you the best.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
We don't get to do this, hurry up, because we feel really proud that we have a student who's done the week in.
Yeah, very proud, that's fun.
Go ahead.
Would you like me to keep going?
Mine's okay.
All right. So many of you are here, and we appreciate it. So we've been trying to make extra efforts through the course of the last year or so to honor all our staff in any way we can, and this is really one of the most public ways that we can honor our staff. So tonight is our pair of professionals that we would like to honor and thank for all your hard work. We have over 40, or right around at 40, individuals around the school district that make a huge, 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 huge impact with our kids. You're at the front lines, there's no doubt about it. You're right there with our kids, you're right there with our teachers, sometimes working with the hardest kids that we have in all different ways. Kids that are struggling academically, kids that are struggling with their behavior, kids that are struggling emotionally, kids that are struggling physically. I mean, you can go on and on and on. But I can't thank you enough, I've worked with many of you, and a lot of new faces too for me, as a former special ed director and a former person that worked so closely with so many different individuals throughout the years. I know how hard it is, and it can be a thankless job at some times, but hopefully not tonight. So tonight is a way for us to publicly thank you, and what we'd like to do is, I have a certificate for everyone, so I'm just going to, but I want to read everyone's name, whether they're here or not. So when you hear your name, just come on up. I'm going to invite Mrs. Kosik up, and she's going to hand you the diploma, or not diploma, that was Precious. You are graduating, I think most of you are. Your certificate, and then just remain up here, and we'll want to get a group picture before we're done, okay? All right. So we'll start with Amanda Bartlidge, hand it here, okay? Dylan Berg, I think I saw Dylan. Patrick Burton. Kristin Corrigan, I think I saw her. Thank you for coming out, we appreciate it, congratulations. Brenda Coverlee. Dylan Ekman. Julie Emmerich. Tanya Fleck. Sarah Fox, pretty sure I saw Sarah. Cooking guru. Thank you for coming out and taking the time, we appreciate it. Sarah Anthorn, I think I saw Sarah, yeah. Sarah, thank you for coming out. Connie Hatch, I think I saw Connie. Emily Hefferle, here. Valerie Isbell. Joanna Linnock-Kinnard. Thank you for coming out tonight, congratulations. Thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you for everything, Jennifer. And welcome back, yes. Sue Lindsey, I saw Sue. Yeah, I think Sue might be close to maybe not being a par, possible retirement, so. Yep, it's her last year, she just told me the other day, so thank you for all the years. Carol McDonald. Thank you, Wanda. Brenda Mary. Brenda, thank you.
Thank you.
Other individual who's been with us a long time, how many years? 20 years, wow. Miranda Middlebrooks. Lori Von Dragon, she's here. Lori, how long have you been with us?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three years, wow, fantastic, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Kelly Moore. Marissa Murphy. Marissa, thank you. When we light up, we are going to have to come together for the picture.
Your tolerance is vast.
Yes. Monica Nowakowski. Gretchen Hollinger. Megan Osarzak. Anywhere close?
You actually got that.
It's probably the first time publicly. Thank you, Megan, for everything, you do, appreciate it. I know it was a test in a way. Melissa Ramsey. Thank you for everything. Candace Robinson. Michelle Shannon. Melissa Shields. Tyler Siversen. Victoria Sayjon. Erin Stager. Michelle Schosher. Amy Taylor. Tony Weber. And Sherry Wells. patiently.
That's what, when you're a W, right?
Yeah.
Thank you for everything. So let's give these guys a round of applause, a few on the side around. But again, we can't thank you enough for what you do every day, and I hope you just take away from tonight a small thank you, and we appreciate it. So let's try to get a group shot somehow.
Okay, Sue, I'm just going to tie you right now.
It's always taller in the back, medium, and then shorter.
Try to get inside the back.
All right, you're in charge, Dean.
All right, there we go. Everybody see me? One, two, three. All right, good, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, congratulations.
Thank you.
Have a great night and great rest of the week.
Thank you. You can feel free to stay, or you can go home in the light. Okay, public participation at board meetings, I have no cards, do you have any?
I have none.
Okay, thank you. Please be advised that this meeting is being audited and will be available on the district website. We need the treasurer's report.
All right, thanks, Mrs. Mulder. Brief report tonight, I did provide the permanent appropriation measure, a little look graph. Tonight, we need to approve permanent budget appropriation. Our budget, as you can see, is right under $67 million. The majority of this budget is, of course, general fund, that's about 79%, followed by the bond fund, and then the next largest are federal grants, and that's mostly because of, well, not mostly, but does include a lot of our SRR monies that we're still sending out, so that makes a difference. So the two, we've got the permanent appropriation measure, the temporary revenue, and that is for, needs to be approved prior to October 1st, so that's why it's on tonight's agenda. We also, as part of the treasurer's motion, are asking for the transfer of monies that have been collected from the fall sports, and we're sending them to the Clay Athletic Fund and the Vassett Athletic Fund. We don't usually do that until the year end, but I think Vassett had requested their fund be replenished a little sooner, so if that's okay, the board, that's it. The other reports are fairly standard, I wasn't going to say a lot, where revenues are down 3%, but expenses are also down, so we're running according to budget, and we'll let you know if there are major variances. I don't have a lot to say tonight, though, so unless there are questions, that's my report. What's going on, I'll let you say.
Okay, may I have a motion to accept the treasurer's report, please?
So move.
A second?
Second.
Discussion of questions. Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Zabisky?
Yeah.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulder?
Yes. Executive session. Is there any need from anyone for an executive session at this time? We will have one at the end of the meeting. Consent agenda, are there any items that the members of the board wish to pull from the regular meeting consent agenda? Hearing none, a motion is needed to vote on the consent agenda items.
So move.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zabisky?
Yeah.
And Mrs. Mulder?
Yes. Moving on to new business, transportation contracts. The West family for the Toledo School of the Arts, Grindel family, Toledo School of the Arts, Hoffman family, Toledo Christian, the Floyd family, St. Ursula, the Sutphen family, Toledo School for the Arts, Pastor family, Toledo School of the Arts, Sizmansky, Central Catholic, Webb family, Toledo School of the Arts, Warnke family, Toledo Christian, Anderson family, Toledo Christian, I'm sorry, Toledo School for the Arts. I need a motion for this, please?
So move.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Zabisky?
Yeah.
Mrs. Mulder?
Yes. Okay, disposal of materials. From the district, it is a Xerox Color Q, an HP Z1 Gen 2 All-in-One PC, a 21 HP Z230 SFF workstations, 153 supplementary materials, 166 teacher manuals, 973 student materials, and 10 wonders from kindergarten. May I have a motion to dispose of these, please? A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zabisky?
Yeah.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulder?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item C, donations. Jerusalem Township Fire Department donated $150 to Jerusalem Elementary. Jerusalem Elementary School received a $50 anonymous donation. Christ United Methodist Church donated 35 backpacks filled with school supplies per grade and per gender. Arbers at Oregon donated school supplies to Koi, an anonymous Jerusalem family donated tote bags, headphones, earbuds, markers, scissors, colored pencils, folders, and other school supplies for fourth grade students. And Tractor Supply donated various building supplies with an estimated value of $700 for the Clay High Construction Program. May I have a motion to accept these donations, please?
So move, thanks to all the donors.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Zabisky?
Yeah.
And Mrs. Mulder?
Yes. And item D, the graduating senior who just received her diploma, we need a motion to approve that graduation, please? So move. A second?
Second.
Any discussion? A roll call.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zabisky?
Yeah.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulder?
Yes. Item D, bids. We need a motion to accept the bid from Bays Incorporated for Vassett Junior High and Eisenhower Intermediate School Gymnasiums for their air conditioning project using SRR3 funds. The bids opened were as follows. Bays, $519,500. Dynec, $555,000. Positive Trades, $558,20. And Earl Mechanical, $586,100. We will accept the Bays bid, and I have a motion, please?
So move.
A second? A second?
Second.
Any discussion? End of roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulmore?
Yes. Mr. Gregory Superintendent, chief.
Awesome, thank you. And very excited about getting those two air conditioner, those two gymnasiums air conditioned, so that's gonna be. Mrs. Cathers is spending some time in there right now, so on those hot days, it is hot. So this is gonna be nice. So thank you, Mr. Sandwich and everybody, for going through that. We're down about just, just about every large space covered except for, I think, one, maybe Star's Gymnasium is the only one right now that isn't, so we'll figure out that as we go. All right, so really, my report tonight's really about thank yous. The vast majority of it's about thank yous and, you know, you can only thank in public at too many places, so I first wanna start with congratulating all our students and our staff and all the employees for the Strong District Report Card and School Report Cards that came out last week. Very proud of the progress we're making. Can't thank everyone enough for how hard they have worked year in and year out. This is just, you know, the culmination of a lot of hard work, all the way down to the individual, you know, student tutoring level. So again, we're very excited that we were one of the most improved, if not the most improved. Mr. Savick shared with me in Lucas County and it made the news and it's just uplifting. And I've been to four of the six schools, plan to hit every classroom. Certainly, maybe not by the end of the week, the end of this week, but certainly beginning the next week and thank every single staff member that I can find for what they've done because it's a collective effort to get there. And, you know, we've had years where it hasn't been so successful, but I think we're definitely on the right track. And people ask me, well, why do you think, you know, this year versus previous years or whatever? And I really believe, I truly believe in my heart that it's a big part of the culture work we've been doing the last several years. And frankly, the deep dives that Mrs. Coy and Jennifer Coy are teaching learning and all the principals and their teachers have been doing, very specific deep dives into data, maybe more than we've ever done, but also following up and working very, very hard with that data and making curriculum adjustments. At the end of the day, is we have to do something different to get different results and certainly been working hard to do that. So thank you to everyone that's involved in OCS and certainly to our leaders for making this happen. Second, I just wanted to give you a quick update. We are still going through that OSBA policy review. Carol's been a part of that along with Mrs. Prue and Mr. Sandwich. And essentially, we are going through just about every policy and talking it through and making sure, number one, it's all up to legal, and two, are we implementing it the way it's written? So we're going through that and at some point here, we'll have the entire policy book, if you will, will come to the board for an approval. I'm assuming that will be done by December, if not earlier. So, but, you know, you never know if a meeting gets canceled or something happens, but it's been good work and it's made us think on a couple of things, so we'll share that out and I'm sure there'll be a summary of everything that's changed that we can go through at that point. So thank you, everyone, for being a part of that. I stopped out at the Y just a couple days ago and saw the second grade swimmers. I don't get to do that very often, but it's so neat to see those little kids in there. So again, I wanna thank the YMCA. They have a grant process that they applied on our behalf for, which pays for all the lifeguards and pays for the instructors that are in the water. So essentially, all we do is provide the transportation to and from that the principals, elementary principals coordinate with our transportation department. And last year, our Oregon Schools Foundation paid for transportation and I have a grant and it's actually being reviewed this week to help cover the costs and I'm optimistic that that'll happen again. So thanks to OSF and the Y for that neat program, seeing those kids in the water and it's making a difference when you hear their stories. And lastly, I think you might have remembered that in June, we were invited as a public school, TPS, and Oregon City Schools to be a part of a golf outing. And the potential of that, you know, one-day golf outing to raise funds for us was pretty substantial. And it turned out to be just a couple dollars, under sixty-nine thousand dollars, which we just received the check for, yeah, last couple of days, I forget which day it was. But I wanna thank the PBF Toledo Refining Company for making public education, you know, a priority. That is a huge one-time donation. I mean, that is one of the biggest we've ever had. I mean, we've had others, but when you talk about a one-time, one-day event and what that raised on our behalf, we're very, very thankful for that. They are allowing us to be very flexible with how that's spent and so it's into the foundation, which is why it's not on the board agenda as a thank you. But the foundation has a grant process and that they've used for quite some time, so we're just gonna embed that in and it'll be open to the district here in the coming months. So, so again, I wanna thank them because they did not have to pick us to be a part of that. But they know they're, you know, East Toledo, Oregon are where TRC Refining is centrally located and they do care deeply about their community, so thank you to those organizations. That's really my report on that. Anything questions, anything on, anything else? I know Dan will probably add a little bit to the academic part here in his report. Thank you.
Any old business? Okay, board reports. Finance?
No report.
Capital improvement?
No report.
Policy personnel, we are working on that. Our next meeting is October 10th. Academic?
I'll tell you what, when you see results like this district was able to release and to share the last week, it certainly makes things very exciting, I think, for everyone within our district. But before we touch on that, we talked about summer school in our meeting last week. COVID money has been used, federal money has been used to fund summer school. We have one more summer of summer school, which is being funded through those federal dollars and it's really helped our children, in many cases, get back on track toward graduation through the high school. And we went through some of the data for that. We also had summer school for kindergartners through the middle grades as well. So thanks to all those who participated, thanks to all the faculty members who supported that and were able to help our children take the next steps in their academic career. A PD Day was held yesterday. One of the main goals that the district has in the coming year is strengthening academic rigor and that was part of what was discussed during the September 5th PD Day, P-Day, PD Day. And then we also had a K through 12 Professional Learning Day yesterday, which came out and was very good for our faculty members. Obviously, the big news is the state report card. Many of you may recall that just a couple years ago, the state changed how it evaluated districts. It went from the letter grade to a starring system, zero through five stars. And the great news is Oregon City Schools is a four-star district and this is something I think that we're very, very all, very, very proud of. I wanna share some of the information with you as far as where we are with each of the buildings and with each of the programs. The district is a four-star school district overall. That's a huge jump. As Mr. Gregory mentioned, we had the largest gain of any district here in northwest Ohio, Lewis County specifically. And of course, there's always room for growth, but definitely made some major league strides along the way. We had two five-star programs within our district. Our Career Tech Program, which consistently has been phenomenal for our children and for our community, is a five-star program. And Coy Elementary is a five-star program. We had three buildings with four-point-five stars, Ike, Jerusalem, and Star Elementary. Clay is a four-star school and Facet is a three-point-five-star school and they have made some major, major strides and inroads here in the past year and that really needs to be noted because that really helped elevate, their improvement in scores really helped elevate the district and move things forward. There are twenty-seven different categories that the district was evaluated on. In each of the twenty-seven categories, the district performed at last year's level or above, in some cases substantially above those types of things. And, you know, we talk about, you know, getting the little things right and I think the district can probably say that they really have gotten the things right. There's a lot of thank yous that need to go around. Hal, leadership strategic plan that has measurable outcomes in it and setting the tone for everybody throughout the district. Our building principals, our teachers, our aides, but there's three groups in particular, one individual and two groups that I think that need to be congratulated. Our parents and our children, who really, really did an unbelievable job at helping our district and our, more importantly, our kids improve their scores. And that's something I think that's absolutely paramount. But without their support and their buy-in, the four-star school district would not be possible. And Hal mentioned Mrs. Coy. Mrs. Coy has been unbelievable in what she's done. I mean, she is, is, she devotes her time and effort into improving our academic outcomes for our children. She digs and she figures out, how do we do things better? And then she goes out and she works with the individuals that need that added assistance and need that added support to help elevate them. And there's a reason why we were at or above in each of the twenty-seven categories this year. So I know that we would like to specifically thank you, Mrs. Coy, for an unbelievable job and really helping move us forward. And the building folks realize the work and the effort that she puts in and we're very proud of everything that you have done to really help make this a great example of the greatness of Oregon schools. Thank you very much for all that you have done. Like anything else in life, there's always room for improvements and we're gonna continue to work on that. We talked about the academic rigor, we've talked about you're only as good as your last performance if you're an athlete. Well, guess what? It's the same way for us. We, as a district, need to continue to improve our academics and with your support and with the support of our community and our kids, we will get there. Thank you all very much for just an absolutely wonderful, wonderful report and we're very grateful and we're very, very proud.
Thank you, Mr. Sandwich. Can we have a legislative report this evening?
All right, just fine.
Student achievement, I guess that was it, right? Board discussion, board members, does anyone have anything? Okay, parent groups and boosters are all hard at work. Athletics are in full swing. We did win the Goodwill Challenge at the football game. Jerusalem Jagapan is Friday, the 22nd. Triumph Induction, which is the music honorary, is September 28th in the Fine Arts Building. The Candy Crawl, which is coming up for the whole, entire Oregon people, or I guess East Side too, that is October 22nd. And Volley for the Cure for Facet is October 19th and that money all goes to cancer research. Okay, executive session. We will go into executive session for the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of an employee. There will be no business conducted and we will dismiss from there. I have the work session as October 5th. Get your calendars, make sure I'm right. And I have the regular board meeting as October 17th. Ladies, you chose the best night to stay because it's very short. Thank you for coming.
We have a motion to go into executive session.
Carol, do the motion.
Yes. A motion going to executive session?
So move.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mrs. Cathers?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?